Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Tempe City Council Work Studies Session Agenda. Item number one is Call to Order. Council meetings can be watched in real time via Cox Cable Channel 11 and at tempe.gov/tempe11. Members of the public mail will attend the meeting virtually through Microsoft Teams. I'm going to go here to item number two, announcements from the mayor and/or city manager. I should ask, Madam City Manager, do you have any announcements? Because I know I have quite a few, so.
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much. All right, we're going to go and do some of these down here, and I think my colleagues are going to join me for all of them, so we're going to go up front. Got quite a few of these this afternoon, so I want to make sure that we can get through them. All right, first of all, we're going to do item 2A, Tempe Works Graduates Recognition. So my council colleagues are all going to be down here for this one, as well as all the other ones that are coming up this afternoon. So I'm going to now invite up Binta Coker from our Senior Social Services Coordinator of the Tempe Works Program, who's actually going to be leading us through this recognition. So I'm going to hand the microphone off to her.
Thank you. So thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to recognize this very special group of individuals who represent the heart of the Tempe Works Program. Tempe Works is an employment initiative launched through the vision of Councilmember Randy Keating in 2017. Since its inception, the program has grown significantly, now encompassing five designated city positions and proudly boasting 49 graduates to date. Today, we take a moment to recognize some of the incredible individuals who have successfully completed the Tempe Works Program. Each participant has faced and overcome unique challenges, demonstrating resilience and strength. We are proud to honor their accomplishments and celebrate their journey while being reminded of the impact opportunity, support, and community can have on an individual's life. Barbara Lovell. Barbara's journey began in March 2025, referred by a Hope Outreach Specialist. She completed her employment in Solid Waste and found housing through the Tempe Coalition of Affordable Housing. Move-in support came from CARE7 and Mercy House, and she received household essentials through Dignity Foundation. Barbara secured stable employment with Tempe Works at CBI and graduated in July 2025. Scott Barker. Thank you, Barbara. Scott Barker. Scott self-referred to Tempe Works while in TCAA's I Help Program. He began working in Solid Waste in April 2025 and completed 90 days of employment. Scott connected with CBI's SSVF Rapid Re-Housing Program, receiving veteran-specific housing support and a move-in kit from Tempe Works. Scott obtained stable employment on his own and graduated in July 2025. Thank you, Scott.
We're going to get a picture taken. Congratulations.
Daniel Donan. Daniel approached Tempe Works while in TCAA's I Help Shelter and began work at Solid Waste in September 2024, where he completed 90 days of employment. With support from Tempe Works and CARE7, he transitioned into housing. Daniel secured stable employment after going through the program, and he became a graduate in January of 2025. Thank you, Daniel. Paige Peterson. Paige was referred to Tempe Works by another program participant. At the time, she was staying in TCAA's I Help Program. Paige began working in Solid Waste in October 2024, where she completed 90 days of employment. With assistance from Tempe Works and CARE7, she secured stable housing and graduated in January 2025. Thank you, Paige. Bobby Burnett. Bobby joined the program independently while in TCAA's I Help Shelter. He began work at Solid Waste in May 2025, where he completed 90 days of employment. Bobby was supported with housing, long-term employment resources, and a move-in kit from Tempe Works. Additionally, housing assistance came from CARE7 and the City of Mesa. Bobby graduated in September 2025. Thank you, Bobby. And we have a posthumous recognition for Adam Softik. Adam entered Tempe Works independently while in TCAA's I Help Shelter and began employment in December 2024 with Solid Waste. He received housing support through CBI's Rapid Re-Housing Program and a customized move-in shopping trip from Dignity Foundation. He was employed with Mesa's Staffing Solutions and graduated in April 2025. Adam sadly passed away during the summer of 2025. He was a devoted father of four, known for his bubbly personality and joyful spirit. Today, we honor his life and legacy as a cherished member of the Tempe Works community. None of this would be possible without the partnerships from our city departments, nonprofits, and community partners, working together to remove barriers and create new pathways. Tempe Works is proof that when communities unite, lives are changed and hope is restored. Each of these stories represent a journey marked by strength, hope, and transformation. These individuals are more than graduates; they are role models, neighbors, and contributors to the fabric of our community. Congratulations to each and every one of you. Thank you. And can everybody come back up for a group photo?
All right, thank you so much. We're going to move on to item 2B, Lights On After School Day Proclamation. Let's see, I've got a lot of people who are supposed to receive this one. I see Mary Maisy, Tim Birch, Cynthia Garcia, Jordan Guerrero, City of Tempe staff members, of course, from Kids Own and the After School Enrichment Program. So if you heard your name or your division, like Bob Barker would have said, come on down. All right, so this proclamation reads, "Whereas the residents of Tempe stand firmly committed to quality after-school programs and opportunities because they provide safe and engaging learning experiences that help children realize their full potential and support their academic growth and well-being; support working families by ensuring their children are safe and productive when they are out of their classrooms; help address key issues in our state such as school absenteeism, learning loss recovery, and workforce development; build stronger communities by involving parents, students, businesses, and volunteers in the lives of young people; and provide a solid return on investment. Every $1 invested in after-school programs saves at least $3 by increasing kids' earning potential, improving kids' performance at school, and reducing crime and juvenile delinquency." And whereas after-school programs provide critical support for children and youth, offering them new experiences and opportunities, along with hands-on learning, that help them learn and grow. Youth who attend after-school programs attend school more often, do better in school, and gain important work and life skills. This support is all the more important today. And whereas the City of Tempe is committed to the education and well-being of our youth and recognizes that quality after-school programs prepare our children to become successful adults and help our community thrive. And whereas Lights On After School, the national celebration of after-school programs held this year on October 23, 2025, promotes the importance of quality after-school programs in the lives of children, families, and communities. And whereas the demand for after-school programs continues to grow, for every child at a program, four are waiting to get in. And many after-school programs face operating challenges so severe that they are forced to consider closing their doors and turning off their lights. And whereas the City of Tempe is committed to providing expanded learning opportunities that help our children grow, learn, and develop the skills essential for success in life and work. Now therefore, I, Cory Woods, Mayor of the City of Tempe, Arizona, to hereby declare October 23, 2025 as Lights On After School Day in Tempe, Arizona." All right, next up, item 2C, the Thrive in Tempe Proclamation. So I've got Tim Birch. Before you get comfortable, I want you to come on back down here. Where's Mariette? She's right here to my left. And of course, of course, anyone from ASU, as well as our school district reps from Quither Chirene, Tempe Elementary, or Tempe Union, please feel free to join us down here if you so like. As a note too, we've also got some governing board members in the house from Chirene. We've got Mr. Cedric Collins. I also see Buddy Davis from Chirene as well. And the President of the Tempe Elementary Board, Allison Ewers, I see too. And of course, who could forget our incredible colleague from the Tempe Union High School District Governing Board, Councilmember Birdetta Hodge. Just as a very quick note here, I think I do have nine of these proclamations in my hands, so pretty much a lot of folks who are here are going to go home with one. Also want to make sure that I recognize a couple of our superintendents from the Tempe Union High School District, Dr. Stacia Wilson, and from the Chirene School District, Laura Tenias. And also a very big recognition too from ASU, Dr. Quentin Boyce. And my colleague, Birdetta Hodge, Councilmember Birdetta Hodge, and Governing Board Member Birdetta Hodge for their work in getting this program off the ground. So I want to give them a little special recognition here this afternoon. So with that said, I'm going to put eight of these down. So I can read one of them. So this proclamation reads, "Whereas the City of Tempe has a long and proud history of prioritizing education as the foundation of community life and opportunity. And whereas Thrive in Tempe is a new community partnership among the City of Tempe, Chirene Elementary School District, Tempe Elementary School District, Tempe Union High School District," you can go ahead and yell. "and Arizona State University, created to connect families with exceptional public schools, innovative programs, and vital community resources. And whereas this initiative highlights Tempe's recognition that education is more than a personal milestone, it is a shared community value, fueling family success, economic opportunity, and long-term workforce development. And whereas Thrive in Tempe provides families across the region with year-round enrollment access, a full continuum of opportunities from preschool to PhD, and programs that showcase Tempe as a hub of innovation and lifelong learning. And whereas by bringing together city leadership, schools, Arizona State University, and local businesses, Thrive in Tempe reflects a shared commitment to ensuring that every student has the tools, support, and opportunities to thrive, and every family has reasons to be proud of their connection to our city. And whereas the City of Tempe is proud to recognize Thrive in Tempe and encourages all residents, businesses, and community partners to join in celebrating education as the cornerstone of Tempe's future. Now therefore, I, Cory Woods, Mayor of the City of Tempe, Arizona, to hereby declare October 23, 2025 as Thrive in Tempe Day in Tempe, Arizona." Hold on here. Let's see. Dr. Wilson.
Thank you.
Let's see. Dr. Boyce. Well, so I got some. I got to go here. I'm going to go here. Dr. Smith, of course. And of course, to our team at the City of Tempe.
Is that it? Is that all?
Thank you. Thank you.
No, no.
For what?
Stay wrapped. I'm staying. You guys are stuck with me.
I like being stuck with him.
When I saw that you liked his post, I was like, oh, he just changed his mind.
All right, let's do it. Nice. Where I have to aim, it's worth it, right? Randy? We got to talk about. Thanks for commenting on it.
Okay, so. Next proclamation we have is item 2D, the Hindu Heritage Month Proclamation. This will be received by Bhagwan Rupesh Kumar from the Hindu Swayosamayak Sangh. Let's see, and I want to make sure you all can come on up with me, actually. Come join us.
Thank you for the snaps.
Thank you.
All right, here we go. So this proclamation reads, "Whereas Hinduism is the third-largest religion in the world with more than 1 billion followers worldwide, including several million in the United States, and the City of Tempe is home to a vibrant Hindu community whose heritage, culture, traditions, and values have enriched our diverse city. And whereas during the month of October 2025, the Hindu community across the state of Arizona and across the nation will celebrate Hindu Heritage Month, an opportunity to learn how Hindu Americans have contributed to humanity in all aspects of life: art, science, medicine, technology, and spirituality. And to uphold the concept of," I'm going to try to make sure I say this correctly. I'm going to try. So. Vasudhiva Kuttumbhakam.
Oh, very good.
I'm trying, I'm trying. Which means, the entire universe is one family. And whereas Hinduism represents one of the world's oldest faiths and civilizations, with its ancient wisdom placing emphasis on fostering peace and engaging in selfless service to others. And whereas Tempe, Arizona, is proud to recognize our Hindu community, whose continued contributions and rich heritage reflect the values of unity that define our city, and invites the citizens of Tempe to join in the celebration of Hinduism and the Hindu community's many contributions to our city and the United States. Now therefore, I, Cory Woods, Mayor of the City of Tempe, Arizona, to hereby declare October 2025 as Hindu Heritage Month in Tempe, Arizona." All right, next up here, item 2E, the Advocates for Children Week Proclamation. And I saw Michelle Brown earlier, and members of the Tempe Women's Club. Come on up and join us here. It's all about kids. So I've, I'm going to do this first, but then I've got a little announcement that I'm going to make at the end of this, because we have the members of the Tempe Women's Clubs here. So, but this proclamation reads, "Whereas the General Federation of Women's Clubs and Tempe Women's Club will celebrate its dedication to the awareness and promotion of the physical and emotional well-being of children. And whereas GFWC Tempe Women's Club, founded in 1912, is an organization of women and men who have the common goal of making their community a better place by enhancing the lives of others through volunteer service. And whereas GFWC Tempe Women's Club has played a role in efforts to advocate for the physical and emotional well-being of children by ensuring that children are protected from harmful situations, by encouraging healthy physical and emotional lifestyles for families, and impacting policy to improve children's lives. And whereas over the past 130 years, millions of GFWC Club Women have given their time, talent, and resources to improve the lives of children, including members in the GFWC Tempe Women's Club. And whereas the City of Tempe is honored to recognize the GFWC Tempe Women's Club's dedication to the well-being of children in our community and to celebrate their efforts. Now therefore, I, Cory Woods, Mayor of the City of Tempe, Arizona, to hereby declare October 19 through the 25, 2025 as Advocates for Children Week in Tempe, Arizona." Just my only quick story. We have the members of the Tempe Women's Club up here. I just want to note, so Michelle Brown and I had a wonderful conversation in my office, probably about two weeks or so ago, maybe three, but I think about two. And one of the things I wanted to do is to thank them for all of the tireless work and dedication that they kind of provide to the City of Tempe in so many ways. Michelle and I were having this conversation, and she said, you know, Cory, one of the challenges we have is that we don't have a working air conditioning unit at the Tempe Women's Club. Obviously, that kind of unit will allow us to serve people, but also to rent the facility out to generate more revenue to carry out the group's activities. So she and I had a little conversation in the office, and this will lead to something, I should say, a little bit bigger down the line, that I got an idea for as we were sitting up here. But I had an opportunity to make a call while we were sitting in the office to the wonderful people at Bumblebee Air Conditioning, owned by the incredible Lisa Bain, who's a longtime Tempe resident. And when I told her of the situation, that the Tempe Women's Club did not have the ability to have an air conditioning unit, and that unit was going to cost well over $13,000 to replace, she said, Cory, I will replace the unit for free. And so, the Tempe Women's Club now has a brand-new air conditioning unit, and I am confident we're going to, there's going to be a little bit of a celebration about this at a later date, but I'll let you know about it at that point in time. But I just wanted to once again, obviously, thank Michelle for reaching out to me and letting me know about the situation that was going on, and so glad that we could all frankly assist. But just thank you for all the work that you continue to do within our community. You are a force of nature, and we love each and every one of you. So thank you. Yes, and also, I am a dues-paying member of the Tempe Women's Club, for the record. And all of you can be as well for $40 annually, so let me remind all of you. There's a few, oh, yes, not just me, there's a whole bunch of us up here who are members, so. Every, okay, all right, see? Everyone.
Congratulations. Say all of them.
Right here, just getting kind of organized. All right, next up. Just to note that guidelines for conduct at city council meetings are on the table near the entrance for those in attendance at tonight's meeting. We're now going to play a video with the proper protocol for ensuring the appropriate conduct at city council meetings.
The City of Tempe welcomes public comment at this time. Disruptive behavior will not be allowed. Continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. We need to be able to hear everyone in the room. Behavior that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of any city council meeting is not helpful and is not permitted. This includes behavior both inside and outside of the council chambers. Should individuals inside the council chambers become disruptive so that city business is not able to be conducted, the mayor will first ask that the individuals allow city business to be completed. There will be time for public comment during the call-to-the-audience portion of the meeting. If no cooperation, the mayor will issue a verbal warning and let them know that the continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If there is still no cooperation, the mayor will issue a second verbal warning and let them know that the continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If there is no cooperation after asking and two verbal warnings, then the mayor will ask security officers to remove only those individuals who are causing the disruption. Security personnel should not engage in any way but only escort them from the council chambers. If individuals refuse to leave, security personnel shall warn them that they are trespassing and that the next step will be arrest by a Tempe police officer. Tempe officers may have to arrest if individuals refuse to leave. Charges for trespass and disorderly conduct may apply, as well as other charges. Should anyone be asked to be removed, the mayor will recess the meeting. be removed, the mayor will recess the meeting.
All right, before we move into the call to the audience portion of the meeting, I want to take a moment to address campaign-related activity, especially as we are now in the 2026 election season. City council meetings are open to the public and are a vital forum for civic engagement. We welcome all individuals, including candidates, to speak on matters of public concern during the public comment portion of the meeting. However, because this is an official city council meeting that is both televised and livestreamed using city resources, we ask all candidates, including any current council members, to refrain from electioneering or campaign-related activity while participating in the meeting. That means no discussing your candidacy, asking for votes or signatures, or displaying campaign materials such as signs, t-shirts, or literature while speaking. Thank you for helping us maintain the integrity and neutrality of our public meetings. That brings me to item number three, call to the audience. The city council welcomes public comment at this time for the issue review session and committee of the whole items on this work-study session agenda. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. Let's see, Madam Clerk, do I have any speaker cards this evening?
I have not received any for this meeting.
Okay, sounds good. That means we're going to move on to item number four, which is the issue review session. 4A is our 2026 slash 2027 federal principles. Just want to now invite our government relations director, Jonathan Shuffield, to come give a presentation on item 4A. Mr. Shuffield.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Let me raise this a little bit.
Very nice suit, by the way, sir.
Thank you.
Want to point that out?
I, uh, Councilmember Amber said it was purple, so I think if it's, if you went to ASU, it's maroon. If.
I would say it's maroon.
If you're an LSU grad, it's purple, I guess.
Well played, well played.
And if you went to Texas A&amp;M, I'm going to tell you it's burnt orange, so. Mayor, members of the council, thanks for the opportunity to speak with you today about our, uh, federal principles for next year. Uh, before I delve into the, uh, principles document, um, I'm going to give a, a quick update on what's happening in the federal government. Um, obviously, we had an election since I was last before you, uh, that led to change in administration, uh, new party control in both, uh, chambers of Congress, um, that has completely shifted the, uh, ideological framework of what the federal government's up to, uh, from, uh, a focus on climate change, uh, infrastructure spending and the like, to, um, pulling back, uh, much of that federal spending, uh, reducing federal workforces and slashing taxes. Um, as you know, uh, this all kind of came about with the, uh, the whole DOGE, Department of Government, uh, efficiency under Elon Musk at the beginning of the year. Um, and it, it led to some large-scale reductions in the federal workforce, but, uh, a couple of things I'd like to point out is that the federal government's actually spending more money this year than it did last year despite, uh, all of these layoffs. And, uh, they've had to go back and rehire many of these workers. Um, a good example of that was the National Weather Service, where they laid off, uh, virtually the entire staff. And then as hurricane season was approaching, they realized they had no forecasters and meteorologists, so they had to go back and effectively rehire everybody else. So, um, it's been at best, uh, a mixed bag, I would say, with the results of that. Um, but, uh, moving on from that, uh, Congress passed a massive tax package, uh, and budget, uh, reconc, what's known as budget reconciliation, uh, which is a process that, uh, avoids the filibuster in the Senate, so you only need a, a straight majority rather than 60 votes to pass it. Um, and this, uh, the bill number was HR1, uh, the president signed it, and, the short and sweet of it is, it was, it was a very large tax cut, and it set up a budget framework for large reductions in federal spending moving forward, particularly in, uh, social welfare programs like Medicaid and, uh, food stamps or the SNAP program. Um, however, just because they pass a budget doesn't mean that they've appropriated any money. And so, um, appropriations bills in the Senate need 60 votes, not that simple majority, so, um, with Republicans only having 53 senators, uh, the Democrats are not giving them seven extra votes to pass any appropriations bills. Uh, so we've led, uh, that's led us to a government shutdown that started on October 1st. Um, Democrats have really dug in their heels on, uh, healthcare. Uh, the main issue that they're fighting on is the, uh, insurance subsidies, uh, for those who purchase their health insurance on the Affordable Care Act exchanges. Uh, the, the, the tax law that I mentioned earlier will, uh, effectively get rid of those, and in some instances are seeing, uh, fivefold increases in health insurance premiums people are seeing in these letters. Um, so Democrats have said that we will not allow any federal appropriations to move until, uh, that is, is solved, and we're currently in the open enrollment phase, so, um, anyways, the, uh, the Congressional Budget Office has estimated that, uh, four million people will drop off, uh, the insurance rolls if, uh, if these subsidies went away. Um, so, uh, the, the latest news on that is, uh, some, uh, Senate Republicans have been having conversations, um, about, uh, us, how they can move forward, and it looks like there may be some breaking in the logjam, at least, uh, behind the scenes on this issue. Um, additionally, in, uh, during this, uh, the government shutdown, we've seen, um, some agency personnel laid off, the Department of Ed, effectively shut down its, uh, Special Education Office, uh, for, uh, on a permanent basis. Um, but I think that you can probably expect to see a lot of lawsuits filed, uh, from federal workers in response to this. Um, some already were filed in response to the DOGE cuts. Um, and those, um, those, as well as many other cases related to executive power, are going to be before the Supreme Court, uh, this term. And, uh, one, one in particular that I would also point to is, um, the, the case over the president's ability to raise tariffs. Uh, that's one of the, one of the cases that the Supreme Court is expected to hear. Uh, that's going to have, um, all kinds of implications for, uh, for executive power moving forward. Um, one other, uh, item that I wanted to point to as it relates to the government shutdown, um, actually, two more, I should say. Um, one is that, uh, half the states are, um, expected to reduce their food stamp and, uh, WIC programs, uh, starting on November 1st, because the, the money, uh, within the federal government runs out at that point. And Arizona is one of those states. Um, we have over a million Arizonans served by both, uh, SNAP and the WIC program, and we're already seeing the effects of some of these, uh, these cuts in some of our communities. For example, uh, the Navajo Nation has already stopped loading, uh, new benefits onto WIC, uh, recipients, uh, debit cards at this point, so we've already seen some of that slowdown. And I think that that's, uh, also going to reverberate, uh, down here at the local level. Um, we're now in a fourth week of a, of a government shutdown. Uh, this is the, I think, the third government shutdown that I've worked through. And, um, virtually every time, because it takes so much time to get the personnel back onboard and to look through their emails and applications and everything like that, um, I would expect to see some delays in funding decisions, or even if we have, uh, grants that we've already been awarded, but the check hasn't been cut yet, I would not be shocked to see delays in, in that funding moving forward. So, um, with that, that's just kind of a quick update on, uh, where we are with the federal government. Um, I'd be happy to take any questions and then dive into my, uh, update on our principles document.
Thank you, Jonathan. Uh, anyone from the council, any comments or questions? All right. Yes, Councilwoman Adams?
Thank you, Jonathan, for your presentation, and I'm looking forward to the rest of it. Anyway, um, I know that the streetcar, we're planning on Rio Salado to Sloan Park, I'm wondering if that's, uh, under the cutting phase.
Um, I don't know the answer to that. Can, is Eric Iverson up here? Do you know?
Because I know they said that they were going to give us funding, but now I'm concerned about it.
Um, hello. Uh, Councilwoman Adams, Eric Iverson, Transportation Sustainability Director, I will, uh, do my best to field this question. We, um, we have been successful in, with the current administration in receiving the, uh, RACE grant.
Okay.
Um, which advances our design of the streetcar. Um, we will continue, so that's a good sign. We will continue to work with them for, uh, capital funding for construction of the project.
Okay, all right, thank you for the clarification. Hopefully, everything will be okay.
Yeah.
Because we need that to happen.
It's, yeah, it's a good sign that we have received that RACE grant. It was awarded under, excuse me, under the Biden administration, so it's good that it has been finalized with the Trump administration.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, great. All right, so you know the questions, we'll move on to item 4B.
I need to actually talk about the principles document real quick, so. Yeah, um, just very quickly, these were circulated to the mayor and council, um, as well as all of the, uh, department directors, and I want to thank all of you for, uh, your input on this. Um, you'll find that they're largely similar to last year's federal principles. Um, a couple of, uh, changes that I wanted to mention, um, on our, uh, Waters of the United States principle, um, I just made a quick update to highlight that there's a new implementation, implementation guidance from the Trump administration, um, that, that, um, updated a Biden-era, um, implementation guidance. So I just made that change. Um, also, uh, remove references to the Inflation Reduction Act, because that was effectively repealed, uh, by the tax law that I talked about. Um, we also included new language calling for expanded equity and access funding for, uh, parks and recreation systems. Um, but otherwise, it's, uh, pretty much, uh, it's, it's very similar to last year, and, um, yeah, a, a few cleanups here and there beyond that, so.
Sounds good. Councilwoman Brandberg?
Is this where we start, just asking questions about it in general? So, under Human Services, on the third page, that Public Health and Wellness, is there still a Centers for Disease Control's Chronic Disease Prevention Program and the U.S. Department of Agriculture Summer Meal Initiatives? Are those still around, under this administration?
Uh, Mayor, members of the council, um, they've been funded by Congress. So, um, whether the, whether the personnel will still be around over the long haul is, is an open question. Um, I know that the, in CDC in particular, they did lay off a lot of the CDC staff, um, at the beginning of the year, and then I think also in response to the shutdown, so that, that could be one of those programs on the chopping block.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right. Next up, go for it here. Next item we're going to, or?
Yeah.
All right, 4B, 2026 State Legislative Principles. Mr. Shuffield.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Um, again, uh, this is a pretty quick update on our state legislative principles. Um, again, circulated, uh, in advance, and want to thank everybody for the input that you offered. Um, and, um, a, a couple of, uh, quick updates on there. Um, in, in the spirit of preventing, uh, greater preemption, we included some language to support, uh, city-adopted building and fire codes and local control of photo radar enforcement. Um, uh, photo radar enforcement in particular, um, the state legislature has been making a lot of moves to try to repeal our, uh, ability to implement that. Uh, we were able to stop that at this, that last legislative session, uh, but they'll certainly be coming, uh, forward again this session. Um, and there's also, uh, discussion about license plate scanners also being, uh, on the docket for, uh, this upcoming session. So, that's something to keep in mind, and that's why we included that language. Um, we also have new language supporting equitable access to community infrastructure, responsible outdoor recreation, and predictable funding for environmental stewardship and conservation programs. And finally, uh, the reference to reforming sober living home statutes has been deleted because the legislature passed a bill, uh, this past session that's currently being implemented by the state. Um, so with that, I'll pause and answer any questions.
Anyone have any comments or questions? Vice Mayor Gold?
I'm just thinking about the wording. Um, being part of National League of Cities, where they're always talking about, um, certain words we can't use, equitable, equity, inclusion, diversity, those words that are not supposed to be buzzwords because that gives the federal government angst. Do we, is that, that's not a concern, because I'm looking at equitable, I was reading through these, I'm like, ooh, no, no word, no, no word. Um, I mean, for us, it doesn't seem like it, but I know when the federal, with the federal policy, I think about that a little bit more.
And, and that, that is a good point. Um, but I, I would say that these are your principles, and I would say to go with the wording that you think best sums up how you see the issues. That would be my recommendation.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Sounds good. Anyone else? Uh, yes, Councilwoman Brandberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I was hoping, maybe under the local water decisions, we could add some language in there to, uh, protect the water infrastructure, the WIF Fund, Water Infrastructure Finance Authority, funds that, uh, specifically the ones that are going to explore the new sources of water for Arizona. I mean, cap shortage is getting worse, so we need to figure out a way to, uh, get new water in Arizona now. I don't know if that's something anybody else would be interested in, or if it's just me. I think she would, she was on. Yeah, I'm all with me.
Yeah. Five and a half years, yeah.
Uh, I'd be happy to work with you on some language on that.
Okay, all right. Um, and under Transportation, Transit, and Street Maintenance, you've got, uh, under the potential Prop 479 implementation, should voters support it in November of 2024, and they did, so, okay, for us.
That was a bad job of saving the document.
Nope, and that was it.
Cool, sounds good. Thank you so much. Anyone else? Comments or questions? All right, sounds good. Thank you so much, appreciate it. All right, next up, item 4C, Community Health and Human Services and Tempe Community Council Joint Impact Report for Fiscal Year 2024/2025. And I see Tim Birch and Octavia Harris coming forward to give the presentation on item 5C. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon, Mayor and Council. Uh, Tim Birch, uh, Director of Community Health and Human Services, and I'm joined by, um, Octavia Harris, who is not only the Deputy of our Community Partnerships Division, but also the CEO of Tempe Community Council, and we're really grateful to be able to here today and be able to present to you, uh, an impact report on the, uh, amount of money that you've invested into the social welfare of your city and its neighbors. Everything we do, we try to drive back toward the priorities, so you'll see what we do covers a lot. Covers really all five of the council priority areas and over 23 performance measures. This reflects everything from the quality inspections we do for affordable housing, all the way through our Tempe Community Action Agency food pantry and projects that are funded in the community. Really the purpose is here to demonstrate the, uh, idea that these programs further the mission and purpose of the city, um, and the mass investment you've made, not, in over $35 million in the Department of Community Health and Human Services, and over a million dollars into the TCAA Agency Review Process, that we are showing you return on that investment to the taxpayers of Tempe. Um, the data we are presenting is transparent, and we'll walk through how that's viewable. Um, but really, as you saw with this graduation earlier, um, with, with our Tempe Works graduation, um, social work is teamwork. We really cannot do this alone, so collaboration is key, and we all have to be rolling in the same direction, so collective impact really is, is the theme of this.
Right, and just as a reminder, um, TCC's mission is to connect those in need with those who care, and TCC really does this by convening community, conducting research, and really determining priorities, so that we can help to implement, um, effective programs and really exemplify prudent stewardship of our resources. So Mayor, Council, and the community really invest in our purpose and our progress toward our mission through both the funding decisions and donating directly to TCC, as well as through volunteerism. Um, directing funding to the Community Health and Human Services Department, as well as nonprofit community partners. Um, and really donating to TCC supports our ability to equitably provide programs and services that achieve community-level changes through alignment and integrating our actions, so that collective impact that Tim was mentioning.
Uh, the report we'll cover today, um, really highlights every aspect of Tempe Community Council, as well as community partnerships and resources, our housing authority, our social services, our health and well-being, all of our partnerships. But also, these dollars go to match philanthropic, local tribal gaming grants, different initiatives, so your dollars are exponentially, um, a force multiplier in that investment. So this represents over 200 different programs to the tune of about $37.3 million. What we hope you see is that these programs are not the same programs you get every year. Um, we tried, the, the, uh, Agency Review Process, as well as the department, tries to continue to iterate and pilot new interventions to address the diverse and evolving needs of our community. Um, we hope that you see individual progress, um, addressing some of the systemic challenges that we have here as well. Uh, you'll notice some key themes from last year's newer format that we'll revisit with you to re-familiarize everybody. Everything's aligned and driven through our social determinants of health. Um, we will walk through the city and agency investments, uh, the program outcomes, data tables, and as we like to say, uh, no data without stories and no stories without data. So we have qualitative life-change vignettes in each one of these, um, social determinants of health as well. This is the report that anybody in the city of Tempe can access. It'll be on our website. We'll have the URL at the end of the report, but just to familiarize everyone with the layout, because this is still rather new and it's second year here. If you look to the left-hand column in the red bounding box, you'll notice the, uh, menu. You can click on any one of those social determinants of health and go right to that scorecard area, or you can drop to the bottom and read about the data and see all of the data dictionary there. At the upper, uh, center of your screen, you'll notice a banner, this one says Access to Care, that is a social determinant of health. Underneath each determinant, there's a definition. Below that, in the green box, is the investment made in that bucket of, uh, for social determinants of health. And below that, in the gold bounding box, you'll notice that we have two scorecards. We tried to highlight one city program and one Agency Review-funded program where we had them, uh, where there's an area of, uh, health investment where, uh, either organization did not have one, we highlighted the top two in that area. Um, but for the data transparency and traceability, if you click on that second tab, All Outcomes Table, uh, we're not hiding anything. You can drill down and see every funded program, what they proposed in their funding, uh, qualification packet, um, what they actually achieved, and what the outcomes were for that program. Um, this is an example when. This is an example, when we walk through the program areas, that you'll see these qualitative vignettes. And this is just Michaela's story. You'll actually hear a little bit more about her in another program presentation today. She is one of our Tempe Work grads as well. We partnered with several organizations, including Tempe Works, our U-Mom Shelter. She was found by park rangers in a park. We're able to move her through shelter, move her through program, move her through life change, and she is now actually carrying two part-time jobs and stably supporting her young daughter.
So next, we'll see the programs presented to you in the framework of social determinants of health, with the first one being Access to Care, which is really about that timely access to personal healthcare services, that navigation, so mental healthcare as well as physical. And the investment of $6.5 million by Tempe to address the social determinant of health included a program from Raising Special Kids, that's their mentoring and support program. So parents are able to, who may be unsure of how to cope with their child's disability and special healthcare needs, are provided support with navigating through these complex educational and physical and mental health support programs. They receive this help through individualized care plans, and they're, these care plans are made available to these families with children that are ages zero through 26.
And of course, we always have to highlight the work that's being done over at our Susas Basio Bridge Shelter, through which, Council, you've made a significant investment. We set a stretch goal this year of 85% positive exits from shelter. The team at Mercy House and the Hope Team beat that goal with an 89% positive exit rate, meaning that fewer than 11% discharged back to the street. They, 89% went on to stable connections with family, longer-term programs, transitional housing, or direct and permanent supportive housing.
Quickly, Counselor Adams?
Just a quick question, where is that in relevance to other programs as far as that, because that seems like a really, really good, high percentage.
It is a very high percentage. Discharges back to the street are usually in the 20%, 30% percentile, so this, these are outlier-type outcomes. But again, I think because of the level of investment the city has made, if you look at the number of outreach team workers to the number of unsheltered we have in this community, it's about 20 to 1. You make a significant investment in this bridge shelter that gives us the flexibility to take in self-defined households, you know, male, female, partnerships, animals, things that other programs in town don't necessarily take in, and I think that's a key to some of the success here.
Thank you so much, and great job.
Moving on to affordable, quality housing, I know we have great initiatives through TCAA and the Housing Authority with around building and developing affordable, quality housing, but this is also making sure we recognize we're getting focused into that quality housing as well, because we know that this helps people afford their basic needs, protects them from exposures to dangers, and this is an area where over $18.6 million has been invested in this part of the program array. There is, we highlighted this one because we have over 100% of all of the families we place in our housing choice voucher programs pass and exceeded housing quality standards inspections as set by HUD. We use this to also dispel the myth that we're putting people in substandard housing. Every family that has a voucher goes into high-quality housing.
And on the other side of that, one of our community-based partners, Child Crisis Arizona, with their foster care and adoption services in Tempe, achieved 100% of their target with providing, helping foster families to provide safe and stable homes for foster children, so a very special population who may be experiencing homelessness due to their circumstances. These foster families receive in-person and online training, about 15 hours of each, and they get consistent and continual support to ensure that they can maintain safe and stable housing for foster and adopted children as well. So our next social determinant of health is focused on community safety. These are aspects that are not just about community safety, but also individual household safety as well. Within the community safety, we have the Sojourner Center's Domestic Violence Prevention Program, its community outreach services for Tempe survivors. They exceeded their target with 93% of their participants reporting that they improved their self-sufficiency, and this is done through pre- and post-surveys with their participants. Participants were able to create safety plans and set goals, while being provided resources to help them with achievement of those goals.
And we like to highlight the success of our CARE7 Victim Services Team. Over 96% of the victims that came through the Victim Assistance Support Program were able to understand and act on their safety plan, that with the backdrop of interpersonal violence being one of the most chaotic and devastating things you can experience. These advocates walk with these clients through this process to where they understand they feel safe in a self-directed, self-actualized plan.
So next, we have the Tempe investment of $2.56 million in economic opportunity. So this is job training, it's mentorship, it's making sure that people can access living wages, and something that is really important in this, in our particular society is internet access, because you can't apply for jobs, it's sometimes difficult to maintain your job if you have a remote job, et cetera. So internet access is also important. And we have two different community-based programs here. The first is the Tempe, I'm sorry, the Tempe Workforce Development.
Yeah, absolutely, and I just want to take a moment to brag on this because I'm so excited. This is our 50/50 investment with Maricopa Works, where we pay for two job developers. Halftime, they pay for it. We bring them together, we work individually with the client. We have one of our senior staff, Carter Ellis, who goes out and works with employers to figure out what we need. We have the entire pipeline. And at the Envision Center this year, you really saw this 198% goal manifest, when each of the three job fairs we did broke the Maricopa Works record each time. We, 200, 300, and the last time, 515 participants at the Envision Center, 80-plus jobs offered and delivered there on-site that day because of the partnerships in that building and in this space. And just want to publicly thank our partners at Maricopa Works as well.
And with the Tempe Community Council VIDA program, the Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Preparation Program, it's offered. We achieved 99% of helping our clients improve their financial management, and they felt less financial stress. And this is more than free tax preparation, this is also helping with navigation of additional services, so the access to applications and applying for public benefits that may help their budget throughout the year, as well as building assets, building savings, ensuring that families are able to either pay their rent, catch up on rent, pay their utilities, and even, again, save for future emergencies.
Vice Mayor Garland?
I just want to say, Tim, I went to that Envision Center, the last Workout Force Group you had, the Job Fair, and I talked to some of the employers there, and they said the last time they were there, they could not believe how many people that they got, good quality people that they hired. And then I talked to the gentleman who kind of organizes it there, and he said that he had to turn away businesses that wanted to come and be a part of this fair because they had heard about how good it was. But he said, yeah, so next time, we got it, we're going to have to have these new people in and make room for more people. So kudos to you guys, because the word's out, it really does provide good work jobs, good jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to talk to sustainability and transportation to take over the parking lot for the next one.
The next social determinant of health is healthy and affordable food. Food insecurity is something that's real and on the rise in our community, so we want to ensure that we have the means to continue to address that particular issue. So that statement of we are what we eat, our ability to go to our jobs, attend school, engage civically, is really important. So Tempe's investment of $100,000 through programs like the Pasta Cristo Relief Services for Individuals Experiencing Homelessness, where program participants, 85% achieved feeling less stressed about hunger and food insecurity, and Pasta Cristo's program is really special and important in terms of they have individuals coming to their center, and they not only receive a meal and receive food box, but they also will have services to help them with job navigation as well as other supports. And then the second program that we have is through Tempe Community Action Agency, TCAA, and their Tempe Food Pantry, which provided improved access to healthy and affordable food for 100% of the folks who they surveyed. Not only are they providing food boxes, but they also provide brown bag meals. They provide support to older adults as well as individuals with disabilities by delivering meals to their homes. So people are able to either go to TCAA, or they can have a meal delivered to them.
Right, quality education. We know that education has long been known to be the number-one social determinant of health for your overall lifetime outcomes. So education is critical. You see that by the level of investment and time we spent celebrating Thrive today and the work that goes behind that. Our Kids Zone team was down here earlier getting a proclamation for lights on after school, and the level, the quality of that team is bar none. 97% of the parents came back with high trust in the quality of that program, and again, helped us continue to exceed the 95% mark, which is also a very high customer service quality rating for this program.
And on the other side of that, we get asked about financial literacy for children, for youth, and Junior Achievement of Arizona, which is based right here in Tempe, continues to be a great support and a great partner to our community with their Radiance Program for primarily low-income students. So they still have their career program that's based within the Junior Achievement Building, but then they also go into classrooms and offer workshops to not only middle schoolers, but also high schoolers. So 86% of those students who identified their future career direction was comprised of elementary, middle, and high school students.
So for social and cultural cohesion, over $225,000 were invested in these program areas. We have had some conversations in some of the subcommittee work here about the power of isolation and the impact on individuals' health and how important community was and is. We saw that today at the Disaster Assistance Center, where we're able to see organizations coming together to help their neighbors, and that is Tempe. So we're really glad to represent these programs and recognize that our Connect Tempe, AARP Digital Skills Ready at 50+, long name, great program. Anybody over the age of 50 can go down to our Envision Center, meet with digital navigators, begin to enter into that digital world with training on laptops and get the safety, so they don't get scammed, they don't get taken advantage of. They know how to build connections and social networks with their own family and stay connected and rooted in that way, but also know how to do things like access your daughter, or daughter, your doctor via telehealth, because that is so important to accessing your healthcare provision at this point. And over 100% of our, 100% of all of our folks who participated in that particular program gave it a high engagement rate for building their digital confidence. Sorry, sidebar called me. And then for dementia-friendly, we know nothing can, for generations that are taking care of their parents experiencing dementia, as well as the individual experiencing that dreadful disease themselves can be terribly isolating. So our dementia-friendly Tempe Cafes bring together caregivers as well as those suffering memory loss for safe and secure programming, where the caregivers get to have a moment of respite and build community, learn skills, while their loved ones be able to give programming at the Tempe Library and have access to quality memory care. And we're able to increase the number of service offerings by over 27% this last year. Social justice promotes a fair, equitable, accessible, maybe some of the words, but things that are important to Tempe. And we invested over $880,000 in these programs this last year. Our community supervision program is a great alternative justice program where individuals can complete a case plan, and therefore, when they do, they no longer have that case on their record, thereby keeping them more employable, more likely to be housed. Over 89% of our participants completed those case plans, which also include housing plans, work with our Hope Team, as well as mental health and treatment services as well.
And with our community-based partners, Mountain Park Health Center, based in Tempe, the medical legal partnership provides support to patients who, maybe they haven't made Mountain Park their medical home, but if they've had at least one appointment there, they can access legal support. So that's through licensed attorneys that can help with issues like maybe their income and insurance, as well as employment, education, and definitely with their housing support as well. And so 100% of those who access this program reported that they had better health and well-being after having legal support. And finally, and most definitely importantly, we just want to acknowledge, thank and acknowledge all of the volunteers that you see here who did help with our process, but definitely thank you, Mayor and Council, for your continued investment in Community Health and Human Services here in Tempe. A huge shout-out to the Enterprise GIS and Data Analytics Team for their patience and great support, huge efforts they made in consultation conversations with us, as well as the creation of the data dashboard that Tim talked about. All Community Health and Human Services Department and TCC staff and board who helped to provide the services as well as the data for today's report. We thank them for their expertise and their ceaseless efforts as we continue to see bear fruit. And to all of our donors, as well as grant funders near and far, those in Arizona and outside, we thank them for their monetary investment as well. And with that, turn it over for questions.
Fantastic. Thank you very much for the presentation. Counselor Pritchett?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. This is great information. So as I've been listening and watching the presentation, on the left side, you have the box that talks about Tempe investment, and I've been doing math as we go along. And so roughly, I'm looking at, in total, $37 million, roughly?
37.37, I believe, was the number stuck in my head.
Good, all right, thank you. I was just checking my own math. And that's Tempe's investment in program services across all of these categories and programs.
Absolutely. This includes your investment in staff time, operations, and then direct programming supports, as well as the funding through our partner agencies.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Pritch?
Thank you. The presentation is, I mean, it just tells exactly what Tempe is embedded into, so thanks so much. Also, is there any way possible, and this is not a today question or even tomorrow, can we get an ideal estimate about our region or what other cities around us are doing versus what we're doing in the city of Tempe? Yes.
We have actually, we attempted to do that kind of query and found very quickly that cities don't all publish the amount of data openly that Tempe does. So hurrah for Tempe's open data policy. So we did forward that request over to Maricopa Association of Governments to see if they could perhaps help shepherd that project, because they had done it once in the past.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Counselor Adams?
Yes, I really am impressed with this presentation. It was excellent. And to spend $37 million on helping the people in need is really important, and it really, it really demonstrates that we are walking the walk and talking the talk. So thank you for having hard numbers to prove that. Appreciate it. Good job.
That's good. Thank you. Vice Mayor Garland?
I like how you presented together this time. I like to be able to see what you're doing in both areas and how they, how much they really work together, so thank you so much for doing it this way. I also want to say, my committee, the Community Engagement and Connection Committee, it really stood out to me on your slide number 15, it said, "Studies show that connected communities can improve family health, safety, and reduce stress and poverty, even racism." That's one of the things that we're looking at in that committee is, is the mental health of our community through connection with each other. So I loved seeing that, but this is a great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Brandberg?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was fantastic presentation, and I wasn't surprised at all by the number. I just did piggyback on what Councilmember Hodge said, and once you get the number, and could I possibly get it per capita, not total, per city? Would that be possible?
We will put that in the ask list, ma'am.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Anyone else? All right, sounds good. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. I also, though, before we go to the next item, I do have a card here for this item, Item 4C. It's from Noah James Markham. Please come forward, state your name and city of residence. You have three minutes.
Aloha, Mayor, and to the rest of the city council. My name is Noah James Markham, and I live in the great city of Tempe. I have an issue with 4C, with living in Tempe. It's great to see that we are helping the homeless, and hopefully, we're helping the homeless that are disabled with disabilities. And that doesn't mean they need to work, because the problem with some disabled people that are homeless, you can't just ask them to work to get Section 8 or, you know, any kind of service. We need to make sure that these people are mentally aware of how to work. I mean, it's just, it just doesn't seem right for me, and having a job myself, yeah, I'm disabled, but... And, and having a job myself, yeah, I'm disabled, but it's been hard, you know? And people with disabilities, we shouldn't be having to have to hop on the wagon with a job just to have Section Eight. So I just, and last year, I asked for help with rent, and Tempe couldn't help me, because there was other people in the household that was making more than me, but they were gambling their money. So they were making a lot of money, but I was not working at all. And I couldn't pay for my bill as a disabled person. So they had, I couldn't get the money for myself for the rent. So it just, it just, that's not good, because my mental health was declining at the time last year. And this shouldn't, this shouldn't mean anything. Like, I shouldn't have to worry about this kind of stuff as a disabled person. And yeah, so I got evictions for a few months last year, and it was ridiculous. I mean, I tried to ask for this help with Tempe, and I couldn't get any response. It took almost two months for this? I mean, it's just, it's just ridiculous. I mean, it's great that you guys are helping people, but it's, I mean, yeah, it really, it really sucked last year to not have a place. But yeah, hopefully you'll take that into more consideration with these subjects. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up here, we're going to move on to item four D, Park Rangers and Park Safety Update. Okay, let's see, I see Alex Chivonovich and Ruben Wilkinson, Jr., that we're going to give a presentation on item four D.
How low do you want it? Good there?
All right, gentlemen, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm Alex Chivonovich, Community Services Deputy Director for Park Services. Joining me today for the Park Ranger and Park Safety Update is Ruben Wilkinson, Parks Manager. Today's presentation will include a high-level, brief overview of the Park Ranger Program, highlights of what the Rangers have been seeing and doing out in the parks over the last year, and also a gauge of where we are in the feeling of safety in parks based on community sentiment survey. We'll also discuss a couple of enhancements to the Park Ranger Program over the last year, as well as highlight a couple of upcoming improvements. And then lastly, we will share a few stories from Ranger engagements and interactions with the community. It'd be difficult to give an update on the Park Ranger Program and park safety without spotlighting Council's strategic priority, Safe and Secure Communities, more specifically, Performance Measure 1.23, the Feeling of Safety in Parks, as the feeling of safety in parks was the driving factor, is my understanding, in bringing back and re-implementing the Park Ranger Program. While there are several strategies to improving the feeling of safety in parks, including improving, maintaining, and activating our parks and preserves, today's presentation will focus on the Park Ranger Program. Rangers, over the last year, have continued to focus on three very high-level general responsibilities, first one being, being a visible presence in parks. Secondly, engaging with the community through ambassadorship and providing connections with the community or to the community. And then third, responding to situations and issues in parks with the appropriate service and level of response, which sometimes can include various levels of enforcement when necessary. Rangers, the sixteen total Rangers, continue to provide twenty hours of park coverage per day, seven days a week, and they're continuing to do that with two to five Rangers on at a time, covering all fifty-two parks in Tempe, or fifty-two-plus park spaces. So the last time we came and gave an update, in September of 2024, we provided information for essentially the first six months of Rangers, or approximately the first six months of Rangers being out in the field. Today's presentation includes information for fiscal year twenty-five, so essentially July of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four, sorry, through June of twenty twenty-five. Over that period of time, Rangers have recorded almost twenty-one thousand reports, which is slightly more than the number that we reported on last time, on average. While that's not a, it's not a one-to-one, but those over twenty thousand reports essentially equate to Ranger visits to parks, so Rangers being at a park for those. Similar to the last update in 2024, the majority of Ranger reports are actually Ranger-initiated, meaning they're proactive Ranger patrols. The six point five percent on the screen showed or represented dispatch calls for service, either being dispatched by Police Communications, Tempe 301, or Community Services Leadership. That's actually the exact same percentage from the previous six months, so that's right in line. And I will highlight that the number one way that their Rangers have been dispatched, if that is the reporting mechanism, is actually through Community Services Leadership, followed by Tempe PD, and then followed up by Tempe 311. Of the almost twenty-one thousand reports, the majority of them were generated when a Ranger visited a community or neighborhood park, such as Michelle Brooks Totris, Daley, or Scare Park, amongst the many other community or neighborhood parks. The higher report numbers in community and neighborhood parks means more visits to those parks, and generally speaking, more time spent in those parks. Park Rangers continue to provide services or visit to parks, some parks multiple times a day, some parks once a day, some parks a little bit less than that, so a few times a week, and then depending on the need of a park, sometime a little bit less than that, and that fluctuates daily and weekly. So diving into a little bit more specific information here, the majority of the reports over the last year were as a result of proactive park patrols, so you'll see that represented on the screen as patrol activity. It's the first selection Rangers can make when they're filling a report out as to why, essentially the first item as to why they might be going to a park. So general patrol activity generally means that it's just a proactive park patrol before it might lead to something else, or they might find some other issue. So generally, we consider that just the visible presence part of those kind of three larger categories. One point to note, these numbers on the screen, if you're doing some quick math, don't total the twenty thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine reports. There are some categories that are not on this slide. There are some, such as like collecting trash, or there might be some other elements that are on this. So this isn't necessarily supposed to represent all the twenty thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine reports, just giving you an idea of some of the larger categories. In addition to providing a visible presence, as mentioned in a previous slide, Rangers are also focused on engaging the community or community engagement. This slide is just basically shifting gears, talking about community engagement. We have a couple of categories of that. The first one I want to highlight is connecting folks to services. This slide specifically highlights the connection to the HOPE team. So over the last year, the fiscal year twenty-five, Rangers provided connection to the HOPE team, two hundred and ninety-two different occasions, not, that doesn't represent two hundred and ninety-two people, it's far more than that. It's just two hundred and ninety-two occasions. Of that number, a hundred and thirty-seven of those were what we consider direct connections, where Rangers would essentially wait on-site until the HOPE team arrives to directly connect with a person. The remainder of those connections of that two hundred and ninety-two is providing resource information, cards, contact information for the HOPE team, for those folks that aren't quite ready to have that personal interaction with someone from the HOPE team. Another form of community engagement or engaging the community is through programs, activities, and events. Rangers have really enjoyed the opportunity to engage with the community through attending events such as Arts in the Park, participating in volunteer park cleanups, and also attending neighborhood association meetings. Rangers have expanded their program over the last year to include now seventeen Park Ranger-created programs. Some of those programs include hiking with a Ranger, hike with a Ranger, which actually this Sunday, I believe there's a hike with a Ranger in Papago. In addition to that, program Sonoran Desert Education to Tempe Pre, as well as Kyrene Elementary Schools, some of the schools, as well as the Kids Zone Program. Park Rangers are also getting ready to launch the Bark Ranger Program. Yes, I said bark, not park, but the Bark Ranger Program, which is going to promote responsible dog ownership in our Parks and Preserves. Participants will be invited to become ambassadors for safe pet practices, environmental protection, and community pride. The program hasn't quite started yet, so we're happy to come back at a later date and give you some more information on that, once it's up and running. So beyond visibility and community engagement, Park Rangers are also obviously responsible for providing appropriate responses to situations in parks, which, once again, can be up to and including enforcement. Many times, it's through education, but it also includes more traditional enforcement. Similar to the last update in September of 2024, issues with dogs off-leash and parking violations remain amongst the top reasons for Park Rangers to provide an actual response or an action. Over the last year, we've also seen a considerable increase in code of conduct issues compared to the previous six months of reporting. And then one point I want to note on both drugs and drug paraphernalia, just for clarity purposes, that information on this slide is representing interaction with people or some level of enforcement on those. You'll see on a later slide, just not to confuse anyone, that there is removal of drug paraphernalia, which you'll see a different number in that. So that's not what this number represents. The detail, this detail provides, of the responses provides information regarding some of the actual actions taken, kind of from the previous slide. Many of the responses on the previous slide were education-based or went resulted in education. Some, as I mentioned, result in more traditional enforcement, such as providing a warning, issuing a citation, or sometimes excluding someone from a park space, generally through a trespass notice. One of the most frequent actions Park Rangers take is to remove abandoned property, which you'll see on this slide, abandoned or a property removal happened nine hundred and thirty-seven times. And then the next slide breaks down those top two categories into a little bit more detail. So you'll see that the number one property removal was abandoned property, followed up unfortunately by drug paraphernalia, as the second most common item that is removed from a park by Park Rangers. Park Rangers, unfortunately, also starting, I know it's not necessarily represented on the slide, it shows drugs as twenty-seven times, but Park Rangers, unfortunately, over the last year, and probably more so over the last six months, has seen a slight increase in actually active drug use in parks. So just want to note that is what they're seeing out in the field. And then the second detail on the right-hand side represents the warning information to provide you an idea of what most of the warnings are for. Majority, once again, are for parking, followed up by city code violations, so park rule violations, and then shortly thereafter, dogs off-leash. With that, I am going to turn it over to Ruben, and he's going to provide some information on where we are with community sentiment.
Thank you, Alex. The monthly community sentiment surveys bridge a gap with the annual community survey, and it provides additional information related to Park Ranger interactions with community members and the feeling of safety during day and nighttime in parks. The results are from just over five thousand respondents, and will help Park Rangers focus on service delivery, such as increasing visibility, increasing focus on specific park rules, or increasing programming and community engagement opportunities. Compared to last year's results, the feeling of safety in parks has increased one and a half percent during the daytime and five percent at night. Based on the community, I'm sorry, based on the monthly sentiment surveys, the five percent increase in the feeling of safety at nighttime is up from thirty-seven percent satisfaction to forty-two percent satisfaction. Percentages aren't exact matches compared to the annual community survey, but trends of improvement are very similar. Survey results also indicate that eighty-one percent of people are very satisfied or satisfied with their interaction with a Park Ranger, and seventy-seven percent of respondents felt that interactions with a Park Ranger either greatly or somewhat improved their feeling of safety. There is one open-ended question asked during the survey regarding how a Park Ranger can enhance the visitor experience in parks or preserves. Out of five thousand two hundred and twenty-six respondents, one thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight provided an answer to this question. And the top three concerns they noted by topic were homelessness, night safety, and drug use. These are the same top concerns reported last year. Responses also include information related to enhancement opportunities, and comments suggest increasing Park Ranger visibility. Over the last year, Rangers added capacity for enhanced service delivery and safety in collaboration with multiple departments, including IT, PD, HR, and risk management. Park Rangers implemented permanently mounted cameras and six solar-powered cameras, which are mobile cameras, and all cameras are connected to the Real-Time Operations Center. Park Rangers are also testing body-worn cameras, which should be implemented within the next year. Other enhancements include lighting improvements for park amenities, sport fields and courts, and improvements to data management, such as Survey 123 and Power BI.
Quick thing, actually, before you keep going. Councilwoman Bratch, you got a question?
Yes, you know, with your survey, can we actually get that on the, the results of it online on our website, so people can see that results on it?
The community sentiment survey?
Mm-hmm.
Is we can work on that?
Thank you.
Lastly, many Park Ranger engagements and enforcement actions can be seen as mundane. Some are unique and challenge the Rangers to deliver a high-level service while being extra vigilant for their safety and the safety of community members. Of all the reported information shared earlier in the presentation, we'd like to highlight three as an example of how Park Rangers initiate safety and successful connections with PD, HOPE, and CARE-7. The first report is of a stolen firearm that was recovered during a Park Ranger-initiated site visit at Birchett Park. While patrolling the park, the subject was identified as having a firearm tucked underneath the duffel bag. PD was dispatched for assistance, and after further investigation, they discovered that the firearm was stolen. The weapon was confiscated by PD, and the subject was arrested. The second photo, which information on Michaela was shared a little bit earlier, is a picture of a park, from a Park Ranger who initiated contact with a woman sleeping at Kiwanis Park with her young child. The woman named Michaela had recently taken a pay cut at work, which resulted in forfeiture of her vehicle and eventually losing her job and her home. The Park Ranger was able to connect her with HOPE and CARE-7, and her and her twenty-month-old daughter, or twenty-two-month-old daughter, sorry, were provided with shelter. Michaela was also offered a job opportunity with Tempe Works Program, and a short time, and after a short time, she was hired as a substitute teacher with Tempe Elementary. The last photo was taken at Papago Park, where a Park Ranger initiated contact with a woman named Crystal, who was in the parking lot with a flat tire. The Ranger, having a background in behavioral health, was able to detect earlier in their conversation that she was experiencing some life challenges. After speaking with the Ranger, Crystal attempted to leave the park with a group of people who are recognized as being involved with suspicious activities. The Ranger reacted by contacting Neighborhood Response Unit for assistance, which ultimately resulted in a positive impact on Crystal's life. Crystal found herself at rock bottom and used this experience to help turn her life around. After some time had passed, she contacted the Park Ranger to thank, to thank him for his help, which contributed to turning her life around, and to say that she is in recovery, has a job, and a place to call home. This concludes our presentation. We'd like to open it up for questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Councilwoman Adams?
Yes, thank you for the excellent presentation of all the hard numbers that you've given tonight. Thank you. First of all, the Palmer Park, I was there this week at the neighborhood meeting, and they installed a camera there two weeks ago, and they said, since the camera's been in the park, they haven't had any problems. They were so happy, because they'd had a lot of problems at Palmer Park, but it has completely changed since they put the camera in. So I think that's really important for you guys to know. Second is, you know, saving lives. I'm familiar with the case of the woman in the park and that twenty-two-year-old, you know, being outside, and that was in the heat of the summer. So Park Rangers are literally saving lives, because that was a really dangerous situation. And, and the third thing is, Park Rangers, it's nice to see that they're helping our residents and our four-legged friends. I love that, and there were some great pictures of the Park Ranger working with a dog, and the Park Ranger holding a pigeon, and it's great. So I'm a huge animal supporter also, so thank you very much for the presentation. Excellent.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Really appreciate the comments and the feedback. We're, we're very thankful to have the cameras. They're, they're a great tool that we'll continue to utilize. And just one point on all three of the, the stories that Ruben had shared, it's a team effort. We are up here representing the Park Rangers, obviously. We're just one part of a much larger team, as Ruben referenced, whether it's the Police Department, Community Health and Human Services through the HOPE team, or CARE-7. It takes a much larger effort than just a Park Ranger, so we're very thankful to have great partners in the city that are impacting people's lives.
Excellent.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Garland?
I love this, this section of our presentation today, the hard information, the stories, because they are connecting, and they make us realize, why are we doing this? And that's what we're doing it for, is the people that you mentioned. So thank you for bringing that up. I love the fact that our Park Rangers are excellent ambassadors into the community. When I was at the Geek Night, that was one of the most popular tables that was there, was the kids coming over to look at, talk to the Park Rangers, and look at the animals that were there, talk about the rock. the animals that were there, talk about the rocks. It was, it was incredible, so thank you so much for doing that. That is a great community outreach and, and engagement. I really like that. And I don't know if you were going to get to improvements, because there are a couple improvements that I'm pretty impressed with, that we're going to be doing, the body worn.
Yes, we're actually, we're actually in a test phase right now. It actually just started today.
Today, yes.
Today, so we're in our 30-day test, and then we anticipate moving forward with body worn cameras, probably late this calendar year, beginning of, of next year.
I think that's going to collect great information, but it's also a safety thing for our Park Rangers, and I, I think that's really important for them to be out there with that, since there's just so few of them out there sometimes, but I really appreciate that. And then the safety equipment, what's the other safety equipment that, our improvements that'll be coming up?
So in addition to the body worn cameras, Rangers, after, unfortunately, we had an incident a while ago where one of our Park Rangers was involved in a, in an incident with a couple of dogs, where they wound up getting injured and attacked by the dogs, and unfortunately, broke, broke their wrist, I think is the proper term, I don't know if that's the exact bone, but, so after assessments with risk management, and also talking with legal and talking with the Police Department for support, as well as future training, Rangers will carry an additional tool moving forward, and they're eventually going to have what, I guess the official term is collapsible impact device. It's essentially, call it a collapsible baton or collapsible stick, that they will be able to use to help separate themselves from something like a dog charging at them, but they'll also be able to use it for other purposes, as to like lift items, so as not to have to make hand-to-hand contact with folks or with other people's personal belongings when they're going through items left in a park.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Either of us, any further comments or questions?
For the presentation.
Thank you. Awesome. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right, next up, item number five, Call to the Audience. The City Council welcomes public comment at this time for the Committee of the Whole Items on this Work-Study Session Agenda. There is a three-minute time limit per person. Madam Clerk, do we have any cards this evening?
Nothing additional, thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Which means we'll move on to item number six, Committee of the Whole 6A Proposed Council Subcommittees. The, let's see here, just, there is one item here, I think, for a proposed council subcommittee this evening, so just as a note to person, the Council Rule 7, subsection 2B, any two members of the council may propose the formation of a subcommittee at a work-study session of the council by identifying the purpose of the proposed subcommittee and the proposed members of the subcommittee, and by obtaining approval of the majority of the council. So, let's see, are there any proposals for a new council subcommittee this evening? There are not. All right. Well, now I'm going to go down the list of council subcommittees in the order listed on the agenda, and ask the subcommittee chairs if they have any updates. So I'll start with item 6B1, Age-Friendly Tempe Council Subcommittee. Vice Mayor Garland, any updates?
I have to say that our next meeting will be Tuesday, December 2nd, at 4:00 PM, and I am, I have the honor of working with Councilmember Keating and Councilmember Nikki Amber on that committee. That's all.
Fantastic, thank you. Next up, item 6B2, Animal Welfare and Cruelty in Tempe Council Subcommittee. Councilmember Baraj?
Yes, all I want to say is our next meeting is November 5th, at 2:00 PM, and I work with Vice Mayor Garland and Councilmember Adams on that, and that's the Animal Cruel, uh, Welfare, Cruelty in Tempe.
Thank you so much. Next up, item 6B3, Community Engagement and Connection Council Subcommittee. Vice Mayor Garland, any updates?
Uh, our next meeting will be Monday, November 10th, at 4:00 PM, and I get to work with Councilmember Arlington and Councilmember Nikki Amber, and I'll just say that if you go to www tempe go forward slash council subcommittees, you can get information on all of the subcommittees and when their next meetings are.
Thank you very much. Next up, item 6B4, Drink Spiking Education and Prevention Council Subcommittee. Councilmember Keating?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers Hodge and Vice Mayor Garland will be meeting with me on Halloween, which is next Friday, the 31st, right here in chambers, to discuss a very spooky issue, drink spiking and education in the city of Tempe. And I will remind the Vice Mayor and the Councilmember, they are on public record of committing to wear their Halloween costumes to this subcommittee, so I'm looking forward to that as well. I will not be in a costume on the chair of the committee, and, and this is not appropriate. Just kidding. I'll be in costume, I, I promise. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, item 6B5, Mixed Use Space Council Subcommittee. Councilmember Chin, any updates?
Thank you, Mayor. I, along with Councilmember Amber, and you, Mayor, have been working with this one, and we are finalizing a date for the next meeting, likely in November.
Fantastic, thank you so much. Next up, item 6B, Motorized and Electric Mobility Device Council Subcommittee. Councilmember Adams, any updates?
Uh, no, I, updates at this time, thank you.
Thank you so much.
We're, we're working on getting dates together, so I am excited about this committee.
Great, thank you so much. Next up, item 6B7, Revitalization of Tempe Town Lake Council Subcommittee. Councilmember Amber.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am working on that one with Councilmembers Adams and Hodge, and our next meeting is going to be December the 1st, at 3:00 PM.
Great, thank you so much. That brings me to item number seven, Future Agenda Items. Councilmembers, we request that an agenda item be added to a future issue review session. In accordance with the Open Meeting Law, there should be no discussion on the item other than to clarify the request. Would any councilmembers like to add an agenda item to a future issue review session? Councilmember Chin and Councilmember Amber.
Thank you, Mayor. Going to ask if, if, there was recently an open house this week on the ADU design competition contest, wondering if we can have an update on that.
Madam City Manager?
Yes, of course, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Chin?
Thank you so much. Councilmember Amber?
Yes, thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was hoping maybe we could get an update on the downtown Tempe Refresh Project. It's been a little while since we've had an update, and it looks like things are going really well, but just want to kind of get the specifics on it.
Sure. Madam City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Amber, we'd be glad to.
Great, thank you so much. Anyone else on council, any other future agenda items for an issue review session? All right, seeing none, I'll close that discussion. Only one other quick item I wanted to mention before I leave, something very important and very dear to me, and I know the members of this council. I just wanted to wish Councilmember Amber a very happy birthday tomorrow, so. Just celebrated, you're almost at one and a half years up here, actually, I was going to say one year, but that would have been this past July, so, see? But happy birthday, hope you have a wonderful Friday and a wonderful weekend as well.
It's her 29th birthday.
Yes, happy 20, happy 29th birthday, absolutely.
Isn't that amazing? I'm 29, and I've got a 23-year-old daughter. How that happens, it's so fantastic. Did.
Oh, man. All right, I'm going to go here then, to item number eight, which is Adjournment. The next scheduled work-study session is going to be on November 13th, 2025. We are adjourned at 5:43 PM. Thank you, everyone, have a good night, and have a great weekend.